To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anything on academics this evening, Dr.?
Um, at the next meeting on September eighth, we will have data from the GSA to share with you, um, as well as whatever data we have from benchmark assessments that have been completed at this point.
Okay. Moving on to delegations. Micah. I, I will, you want to go in executive session?
I don't know.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go under executive session?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Should we go in the conference room since there are so many people?
I'd recommend it. That way we don't inconvenience them.
Is that alright?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that no action was taken in the executive session session. The time now is seven ten. Considered approved an agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Emerges Healthcare Staffing Incorporated to provide supplemental healthcare staffing services effective July one, twenty twenty five through June, June thirty, twenty twenty six. No motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved contracts for services between Lewis County Board of Education, Sheriff, Pinkney, Autism Specialist, DBA Behavior Matters for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. No motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay, motion carries. Do we have a motion for approval with what we have been provided for personnel? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Adam.
Yeah, I got, yeah.
I, I do just have, have a little bit, a couple, a couple questions. Um, just how we're doing. I, I, I don't know how factual it is, but I heard we don't have some subs in some certain classes and some of the assistant principals are, 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 are doing it. And I saw a couple really good posts that, that both schools, schools made trying to hire folks. I just wonder how we're doing in those math and science classes and special ed classes and, and, and getting the, and, and getting the subs we need. I see we're hiring, we're hiring three on this list or something tonight, which will help. But there was one class in particular, I think it was a science class, that didn't have a teacher or a sub. So I assumed the assistant principal or someone was teaching. So I was just curious about how we were progressing in at least finding subs to fill those spots that we don't have teachers in. I think there were eight on one, eight on one and eleven on the other or something like that, that we were still trying to hire. Math and science mostly, special ed.
Math, science.
Some of the things we're going to get filled in, it was like math field coordinators and stuff, those will get hired. But I just wonder if we were having any luck whatsoever.
Um, we're having some applicants, um, many of which are not certified at all to be teachers. Um, and quite frankly, our staff have been filling in and covering classes. Um, and they've been doing that a lot here at the beginning for those classes that we don't have staffed.
And they're getting paid accordingly to what we set the schedule at.
Yes.
A couple meetings ago.
Yes.
That's the best, that's the best we can do right now, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Storey, my question is, on these classes that we cannot get filled, and I know it's tough. Could we hire, could we buy an online class if we have to, that could, you know, teach some material and have a substitute monitor that or something like that as an alternative? Especially in science and math, I know there's very limited what you do. And I know an online course is not the most ideal. But in this situation, I think without a teacher there and a sub in and out, the ideal material would be in the online course that kids could learn. Granted, and granted, it's not the ideal situation, but teachers, it's not a virus market for teachers right now.
That's something we can certainly look at, sure.
I think that'd be.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Or solution.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Approve the minutes from the August second, or August seventh, twenty twenty five special session and August eleventh, twenty twenty five regular session. No motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consent agenda, out of state field trip, Doug Sacklin, Lewis County High School Theater students to attend Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Renaissance Festival, September twenty seven, twenty twenty five, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Do we have a motion for approval?
Still move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, what's it being paid out of?
The transportation will be paid out of their levy funds.
Okay. Can you think further? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay, motion carries. Finance, approved payroll payment of bills, one million, four hundred thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. No motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Adam, I got a question, just my same question that I ask about every time, Mariah. Another couple weeks or month has gone by, are, are we still okay? I mean. Looking like we're going to have a surplus we have to have and nothing crazy is coming up since July one that we've had to address that's really outside the budget. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Reports and discussions.
Mr. Maliko, facilities. While he's on his way up, I emailed you the report that he sent so that you could look at that before the board began.
Good evening, everyone. So we have, uh, major projects lists, uh, for all the schools and the buildings. Um, do we want to just highlight some per school or do you want to have any questions that you want to make key on right away? I know everybody's living on time.
Tell us if anything's messed up, right? Do we have to go through all of them just to?
Well, so far, I mean, it's, we're, we're making a lot of progress. So the information is coming in. Um, we're able to, uh, work on a lot of these projects within our facilities team. Custodians are helping out a lot. Um, the communication is, is increasing between the schools, me, facilities, teachers, the principals. So I, you know, I see a lot of positive, uh, forward movement in this. And then as the items, uh, the work orders are coming in, they're being logged into the computer system that we have, the hero. So that helps us with tracking and allocating resources. I've been able to identify an awful lot of work orders that may have, um, been slowed by facilities, meaning their, their particular work day or just not having the tools to, to get the job done or the skill sets. And so, um, many of these work orders, then I'm pulling out myself and instead of getting them to facilities, getting them to subcontractors who are setting it up and then knocking them down. And so some of these major projects which are on this list, then some of that is, is subcontractor work. And we're fiscally responsible, but we're also getting the work done.
You hit the main thing. I think you just hit the main thing that, that I know I wanted to hear and some of the other folks wanted to hear, is communication back and forth between the schools. I know, I know early on, first week, you got hit, you know, in the face with, with air conditioners not working and ninety-five degree weather and ninety percent humidity. So, so i- it, it's the hope that, that next year we'll have a plan earlier in place. Not your fault, I mean, you're brand new, you know, we should have air conditioners for years probably stored away in case of an emergency.
Sure.
But, but in, in, you know, Peterson, I walked up upstairs and I came around, wringing wet with sweat, so I knew it was hot. But, but we need to figure out if, if that's not getting done now, and I can't figure out if it is or not. I don't know what we're cooling down or off. We need to put that on a priority list, those upstairs classrooms and that academically. And if it's getting done, that's great because I don't, I don't know whether, I don't know what we're cooling and what we're not cooling. I don't think we're cooling the whole building with, with this project.
I, I anticipate that in the next board meeting, two weeks from now, you're going to have some very good news about the classroom heating and cooling HVAC system at Peterson. You're going to have some very good news.
That's fantastic.
So I.
Approximately how many, uh, classroom air conditioning units did we have to buy? Any idea?
The temporary, it, it was, um, a dozen, maybe fourteen.
Okay.
Just to get, uh, Peterson so the teachers could actually function. Um, and granted, we had, uh, significant heat and humidity in the last week. It's cooled down a little bit, you know, so we're not seeing as much, um, the dramatic, uh, effect right now.
But now that's at Peterson, or how about in, like Jane Lou, other schools you have?
That's at Peterson, so Jane Lou is also experiencing that. And we just got the purchase order approved for seven units, uh, for Jane Lou. The units are different, window units for Peterson, Jane Lou is all fixed glass, so I have to get a different unit.
Right.
So we just got approved for seven of those at Jane Lou. Uh, principal's extremely happy with us right now. Problem with Jane Lou that I have going on is the plumbing.
Yeah.
So.
So, so we have twenty-some air conditioners with, that we've.
At, at least.
So when we get the HVAC system fixed and those individual units won't be used, have you thought about a good place to lock them up? An inventory room and only like two people have a key?
They, they are not going to be destroyed. They are going to be, they are going to be used and maintained and stored appropriately.
Yeah.
Uh, for an emergency use.
Cause it's going to happen.
They're, they're not going to be, they're not going to be destroyed.
Okay.
Right.
We, I appreciate your responsiveness to that, I really do.
Yeah, so that's the heating and cooling. Um, I will tell you that, uh, Jane Lou, we will not have a permanent solution. The rooftop units, those will not go in for at least a year. So we have another summer coming up for Jane Lou.
Okay.
And then as far as Peterson goes, the rooftop units that are getting finished, that system does not cover the classroom areas. It just covers the main building, common areas. So I, I have a plan and hopefully I'm going to give you some great news next time we meet for Peterson for all the classrooms.
Okay.
Um, athletic fields?
That's where I was going to go next, but you go right ahead.
Okay, so athletic fields, working with the subcontractor. And then once I get a comprehensive plan from the subcontractor for the athletic fields, and I will tell you that the principals for both, um, Bland and the high school have been just spot on with getting us the information that we're looking for. They met the deadline, they got everything we needed to give to the subcontractor. They're going to develop a comprehensive plan. And then if we can incorporate that aerial spraying, uh, contact that you gave me, sir, then we can get that, uh, incorporated as well. So I'm waiting on the results from the, from the subcontractor for that. We're also trying to switch out machinery for, for example, the high school, they need a finish mower. They don't need to be mowing the playing field with a tractor with chains. So we're going to try to get them the, the right equipment and swap out some schools that does need a mower, a tractor.
I think there was some potential for, for Stonewall to, to partner with us to borrow some of their equipment if we needed to. And, and, and the key thing about these football fields, I think that's, based on what I'm told, I think it's important that that stuff gets done in the fall. In the fall, and, and if you have to aerate it, and I think it's still playable immediately. But if we're going to keep grass out there, we, we're going to have to do what we're going to have to do to both these fields, and they're covered with weeds and, 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 and the high school field, I was up there and took pictures the other day, and it's, it, it's going to be rough by the end of football season.
Wouldn't you anticipate here back from the contract? Because Mr. Faly's right, I think time, time is unfortunately the essence with not spraying it. Of course you have to kill that nasty grass and then let it get back to where it is and then aerate it all that. Do you think you'll get back with this relatively soon?
I, I do, sir. They've had, um, you know, as, as a subcontractor, this is their busy season, so trying to incorporate and help us at this point, it's, you know, a little on the back burner, but I do keep in constant, contact with them. So I'm, I'm anticipating last week, didn't hear anything last week, I'm working again. So I hope that we're going to have a comprehensive plan, uh, by the next time we meet. Um, so that's with the fields. Uh, scoreboards, so we have all of the scoreboards operational. The twenty-five second clocks, the new ones, they, they do communicate, but they're garbled right now. So the new twenty-five second clocks should be delivered, um, the first week in September. So we're going to get those installed. And then, uh, next week I'll have, uh, rendition for you for a proposal on a replacement scoreboard for the football field. And that is, right now, we're looking at an all-in budget for the scoreboard, which would be right around forty thousand dollars. And that is a new scoreboard, tear down a demo of existing, haul off, installation, commissioning, that's an all-in. Our facility guys don't have to do anything, and it's a very, very nice scoreboard for forty grand. So it, that's an option, we can go higher, but this is a quality scoreboard replacement. And we can look at that this year, next year, but for forty grand, we can swallow it because I, I heard rumors at two hundred grand or better for a new scoreboard. So we, we have, we have a good system set up and we can get your rendition by next meeting.
And Tyler, once this subcontractor has his plan to you, he's going to stick with you for the next year so we can be ahead of this next year.
That's the anticipation.
We're going to keep him in the loop and then they, they do it when they need to do it and we get out of the way.
Yes, that's, that's the anticipation, yes. Yeah, this is long-term, this isn't a one-time fix and go, and then, you know, we have to start all over because the fields are falling apart. No, no, this is, yeah, this is good.
It's really late to spray now, if any, you know, it's more kind of.
Right.
The, the final question I have, and it, it may be more precarious than, than, than it really is for you, Tyler, but, but I know we still have construction going on up at high school. And, and I'm assuming, um, the disruptions are pretty limited, how's it working? I mean, it's working well, I mean, we're doing?
Yeah, they are now officially today, night, night shift, and we have a meeting Thursday afternoon for updates.
Okay, also, uh, I was up there at the high school today and I, I looked around, uh, I mean, there's a lot going on up there. There's some rooms that I'm sure you're aware that is warm, uh, Mrs. Miller's room, uh, I understand the heat and air are both. She didn't have no heat there last year. And I understand, uh, Mrs. Eiler, uh, there's some problems in her room, if you could check in. And also the scrubber that the janitors have got, I reckon have been having some problems with it. Have they, and I, and I told them they needed to fill out a, a request, you know, for equipment stuff, and, and that should be coming to you. I told them that's the first thing they need to do.
That, that's all we need, uh, for equipment, we can handle it.
But I would, uh, I would mention it to you. Uh, also, and, and I know you're coming in, uh, behind the eight ball on this, let's speak. The parking lot of Jane Lou's school, is there any update on it? I know we talked about it, uh, last year, uh, or, uh, when we bought, uh, the property down there and tore down the old elementary school about eventually trying to make that into a parking lot. Where are we on that? Are we, are we still looking at it or what's?
I don't believe anything's been done since the last discussion.
Cause I know, I know that parking is a, a big concern when I visit the Jane Lou's school and, you know, talk to some people, as it's always been down there. So, I mean, if we could maybe look at that in the future. And I do, I do want to thank you for the attention you took to the property owner down there.
Yes, sir.
On that, I, I really appreciate that.
We already have two proposals in to get that, uh, cleared out and cleaned up.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, they, uh, uh, but other than that, them two there, uh, you could look on them up there and, and that. My understanding is that there's supposed to be a, a, a new scrubber that they could get. And they're gonna send you that stuff and information on it, so.
Not, not a problem.
Okay.
Haven't heard about that yet, but not a problem.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, I told them they needed to go fill the paperwork out and they said they assured me they would, so.
And my, I know I used my turn, but I got a couple of things now that Mike talked and gave me a minute. So, so I did get, get a couple. I, I don't know if we can do anything about it or what's going on about. I think something's going on. But, but I got a couple complaints about the traffic computer, something like, I'm sure you all have the roads cleared back up. I know you're talking the highways to try to.
It's already done. I have one step left is that's a survey on the lot line.
Uh-huh.
And then I've already developed the scope of work. I have at least three subcontractors waiting for my scope of work. I just need to determine that lot line. Then I'll receive those competitive bid and it's not gonna be closed. It's gonna be competitive. I'm gonna give it right back to them. Hey, you wanna come down two grand? Come down two grand. And then we're gonna start digging. And I, I will have this done before Christmas.
What is the solution actually? Can you articulate what the actual solution is?
Yes. So from the driveway entrance, okay, that, that's called an apron, from the apron, from the street. Then on private property being ours, right, we are going to drive up the hill and connect to the pavement that's around the back of the parking lot. If we do that, then we can in queue, we can take off about a hundred cars off of Berlin is the street. We can pull a hundred cars off of Berlin and put them on private property and wait for the parent pickup and, or student pickup and student drop-off. And we can get them off, off of Berlin. That's the plan.
You accomplished that. They'll put a statue out there, right?
I, I want this done before the holidays.
And, and, and the second thing, and this may be for Mrs. Lambert too, I, I don't know, but I know that we, we raised some money from, from, I think some of the car dealerships. Two or three or four car dealerships to potentially move the weight room into a bigger building. And I don't know if that's gotten lost in the shuffle or not, but, but I hated to raise money and then not know what we were gonna do with it. I think they raised fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. Do you know, Carrie?
I don't know what you're talking about.
You don't know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. I mean, I think our time is critical.
Yeah, moving into the bigger, into the bigger building where there's some equipment or something like that.
So is there, if I understood correctly, is there not a dilemma with, with the building space? And I think even Coach Cogar had mentioned that they would be, you know, comfortable with erecting a, a building somewhere on the property. But identifying that, I think, is the question.
Well, I think the tractors are in there or something like that. I think it's a mess of a building, but the weight room's much too small for, for what we're trying to do. And I know some folks raised some money for that. This was before your time too.
Yeah, I know nothing about this one.
Ryan was involved in this. May have been before your time, Carrie. You know what I mean? I just, no, it could have been before your time.
I mean, I'll see, cause I know the, let me check with them tomorrow.
Was it an alternative location to put some equipment or, or maybe the carts? Something to that effect?
Something. Missy might know better than I do, but I just knew they raised, we raised some money for it from the, from, from three or four car dealers. And I think we're moving forward to try to move the weights wherever they are into a bigger building where you can get more kids in there. I just don't wanna be able to raise some money for something else. We probably owe it to the folks that donated it to, let them know. Yeah.
So any questions about any of the schools on, on spreadsheet in particular? Okay. All right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great report.
Superintendent updates?
I'll try to keep this short. Pre-K started transitioning last week. All of them came to school today at one time. So we now officially have all of our students back. I had the pleasure of being at Peterson Central on Friday night at about eleven-thirty and was watching them crane the HVAC units onto the top of the building. So that was, that was pretty interesting. Attendance, a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. Mrs. Craig asked me to share that students who missed fifteen or more days last school year that were unexcused. Those students have been identified and are on a list and they are monitoring those students' absences at this point in the year so that we can get ahead of that. They have sent out a countywide attendance letter that was emailed to all principals and communities in schools to distribute to families and students. We found several students that were not showing at some of our schools, so they were on the list, but they weren't coming. So they've been finding where those students are, either enrolled in virtual homeschool or had moved to another district that we weren't aware of. She's been working very closely with Angie Mullins and Kristy Flanagan, consulting on students and sharing attendance information, et cetera. And she's been working with the state department and has been beginning to set up meetings with schools for contacts with families. So she asked that I share that with you. I want to say a special thanks to our cafeteria staff and the work that they're doing. They've been instrumental in making things work and, and making sure that, that students get the food that they need. With the new diet requirements, that has been a bit of a challenge in trading foods out that we may have stored the thinking we could use and so forth. So our cafeteria staff are working really, really hard. And the last thing I have is I'd sent you an email. Legislative update training for the board will be September the second at five-thirty. So I got that set up.
And what was that again?
The legislative updates is September the second at five-thirty.
Mr. Bailey?
The attendance letter was great. I mean, it was, it provided the perfect information. I read it. Said, boys, if you, if you're fevered, throw it up, don't come to school. Otherwise be there. So it was, it was really good. But have I talked enough tonight? Have I talked enough tonight?
We'll pass. Mr. Bush?
I wanna, I think most of us have been getting lots of emails. And I wanna thank the, the administrators, the principals who, when they're on the chain, getting back quickly to the people and their complaints. For example, getting back quickly about the dual credit classes. Mrs. Lambert, I appreciate that. A lot of times, and this is just my opinion, if a parent has a concern or complaint and you send it to five board members, you need to remember that board members meet every two weeks in a board meeting. And there's not a lot we can do in between, but if you put principals, administrators, superintendent on the chain, you're more likely to get something done because they're working every day and we meet once every two weeks. And that's, that's just an advisory opinion. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Walker?
I'll piggyback on what Mr. Bush said. I think if you're talking about communication from this office to the schools, from the schools back to this office. And we see how it works when everybody's communicating.
Yes.
And that whether it's communication in an email or going to that school and talking to people and you see an eyeball, then you get a real feel of the problem. You sit out here and you just send emails back and forth. Go talk to your people. When we support our people, we're all affected. When we don't support our people, we're not affected. But the best part that I've seen in a long time was I attended the first day of school at Roanoke, two thousand twenty-five, the Roanoke Emmys Award, where they rolled out a limousine and red carpet where the kids got out of the bus, went in a limousine, was here to that door. And they jumped out of the limousine and walked down a red carpet into the door, into the front day, front door of the school. Every kid smiled. It's the best thing I've seen since I've been on the, probably been on the board. And a big shout goes out to Roanoke staff. That was a great thing to watch. I wouldn't, I never liked the first day of school. I'll be the first to tell you. But those kids, they all smiled, so they had to like what was going on there. That was a nice thing. That's it.
Just to jump back in for a second. And you also need to remember, when it comes to personnel, a board member cannot talk or reply to any questions you have.
Mr. Holder?
Yes, I wanna commend, commend the staff, the teachers, the bus drivers, cooks, aides, right on down the line, everybody. I know Peterson and, and high school, Jane Lou, I know some of these schools are working under adverse conditions, very warm. But they're, they're, I was up to high school today and they're still, they're still taking care of what they need to take care of under, under very difficult circumstances. So I would, I would like to praise the, the efforts of, of all, all the staff, teachers and everybody. Also, with that being said, I've got something that, that I'd like to just maybe bring up at another board meeting, maybe once we. First thing I'd like to know, Mariah, Mrs., do we have, is there anywhere that we could get like preparation days at the beginning of school for the, the teachers? I know, I know with, with everything going on this year, to get the classrooms ready, these people done some extra work and stuff. Is there any money anywhere that we could get to give these teachers and aides and stuff, maybe a few more days of, of preparation to, to compensate them for their hard work that they, that they've done? And, and, and if we do, where would that money come from?
We would have to, I would have to give it personnel. We'd have to look into that together. But it would most likely come out of general funds.
Do we have any carryover money that, that maybe we could do this with? But I, I think what, what I'm getting at is, is, is to go in, in, into some of these places that, that, that they've put in a lot of time. I mean, I'm talking three or four, five days. I mean, you know, of, of extra time that was put in to get things ready to go so that we could have school. So I, I wanna thank everybody for that. So that was one thing. If we could look into that, maybe report back at another meeting. Also, and, and I've got this question here. If, or roughly, and I'm gonna use Jane Lou's school as an example. Is there a, a rule of how many students per secretary that there is and so many staff before you have to have the second secretary? Is, what, what's the ruling on that? What's the state code?
We'll get that for you. But typically Jane Lou doesn't meet a threshold that would require more than one secretary.
Okay. Okay, my understanding is two hundred and sixty-eight and forty-five staff. Is that pretty close?
My elementary school that I was the principal of with one secretary had almost three hundred and fifty students.
Okay. Other than that, like I said, I, I, people have been, you know, and, and Tyler, I, I wanna tell you, I think you're hitting the ground running. You're doing a fine job. I've, I've heard good things, you know, that, that people reaching out to you on different things and I, I wanna commend you for hitting the ground running. That's all I have.
So I really don't have much to kinda follow up with what Mr. Bush had brought up. I believe it had been last meeting on the policy for the response time to emails, phone calls. I, I think that the sooner we can get something out there and to our staff, that'd be to our benefit. Awesome. I apologize to get off this policy kick, but our job descriptions, I, I feel like job descriptions and our organizational chart. And then, you know, conducting these, conducting these personnel evaluations or, or something that we've, if we're, if we're not doing, I'm not saying we're not, we, we probably should. You don't wanna stick with those, in my opinion. But, but certainly I, I feel as if that we should get the, the job description squared away and enact the, the, the policy for responsiveness if there's an appetite amongst the board. But outside of that, I think we have to set some goals, don't we?
That's the next thing on your agenda. Yes, sir. So I emailed you a copy of the board goals from last year so that you would have something to go from as you determine what those goals will be for this school year.
We do this in the faculty session or we do this in?
You do it in the faculty session.
So last year, obviously, the academics, everybody has in front of them. I don't know if you can look up there. I, I feel strongly about that, the accountability and communication piece. Somehow we need to put that into this and that maybe flows under culture maybe a little bit stronger than maybe the academic piece.
Mr. Gissy? So we're looking at the, at the four or five goals that we had for the, for the board last year. And, and if I looked at, if I look at number four, there's gonna be a survey done at the, at the end of the year to determine progress. What says, right? So will that be, what, what's our end of the year, then the next school year? Or do we do a survey or? Do we need to do a survey?
I did not do a survey at the end of last year.
So do we have to set these goals tonight or can we think about this and set them at the next meeting potentially? I don't know what the timing is. I mean, do we, or do we have to set these goals based on code or?
So tonight is discussion of the goals so that I can go back and put them together. And then at the next meeting, you vote to approve them. So you're not voting on anything tonight. You're only having discussion about what you'd like to have in them.
I would like to continue with the, the facilities report notebook and accomplishing those things that was prepared for us a couple of years ago by Equitrans. Was it EQT?
V H T.
Yeah, yeah. I noticed we haven't been bringing that book very often, but I'd like to continue with Tyler here. Are you familiar with the big binder?
I, which binder is concerned, which school's we're talking about?
There's a binder of facilities report notebook that should be in your office.
That was done a couple of years ago. That listed the, the critical things that needed done in each individual school, the moderate, you know, more dangerous.
No, I'll dive into it right away.
Yeah, and we used to go through and check off the things that were being accomplished. And, and some of those things that maybe you need to be aware of too, that you may not know exist in a school.
Certainly.
So, but I'd like to maybe continue with the facilities updates and upgrades and all the construction that's going on. So I'd like to have something like that in, in the board goal.
Under academics, I, I know that this year may be a, a stretch, but I think we should have it on there. The, the efforts that, that we've made with our partners at the painters union, the Hope Gas, all of those dynamics. I totally think that we need to.
So rather, so rather than putting that under academics, what if we would do community partnerships? And then we could include not just people that, we could include everybody who's pitching in and helping out the school.
Sure. Good to meet you, bud.
I'm, I'm like Adam on number four. I mean, I think, I think at this point it needs to stay. I think we still have a long way to go on that one, even if we can strengthen the, the, the language with, with, with the policy that Adam talked about at the last meeting. I, I think the finances, on the finances part of it, I think, I think that that, that's all right. But I think, I think I gotta have a different way maybe of, of hearing about where we really stand. I mean, I, I don't know how to articulate it and I need to think about it before the next meeting. I mean, I feel pretty good that we're, we're in pretty good shape. But, but I wanna anticipate the future so we don't get stuck in, in the boat of twelve or fifteen other counties. So I'm, I'm not sure how we, how we articulate that, but somebody else might have an idea to help me.
I think that could be simply done by, by talking to Mariah. And, and I think that she does an excellent job. Her, her and her staff does an excellent job of, of. And, and I think that she does an excellent job, her, her and her staff does an excellent job of, of keeping us. I mean, I know before you got on the board, Jimmy, I mean, she come in and took over and has done an excellent job. So, I, I, I depend very highly on her opinion and, and what she's done, her and her staff. So, I, I think that she has, her, her staff has done a very, very good job. I know with these reports that she's been giving out and stuff, things like that, you know, it, it, you know, been a long time a, a coming. Because when I first got on the board, we didn't have anything like this, did we, David? So, and, and, and between her and Dr. Stewart, I think they're doing a good job of, of trying to do that. So I, I would, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
I, I appreciate that sentiment, Mike. And, and, and to tell you what, what we're, what we're likely to see coming from, coming from Charleston is, is a lot more scrutiny of everything that, that all the counties are doing, not just ours. So, so I, I would hope that we would, we would strive to be, to be one of the better ones. I mean, there's some really bad ones and they're the ones that are bringing the whole, the whole state down. So, the more transparency we can have on finances, the better off, I think, I think will be in the long run. And I, I, again, I really wish I could articulate better what, what I'm looking for, it's so complicated. It is so complicated.
So, our number one responsibility as a board member is fiduciary. And with all being said, we've made progress. But with that being said, I think it'd be nice going forward to look at a budget, where we were last year with that budget, where we are this year as we go forward. A line item budget, not, not a list of where the checks went, but a budget of each department, where we're at and where we're going compared from last year and this year. I don't think that's, if that's your responsibility as a board, I think that's what you need to have. And we, we're getting more, don't get me wrong, but I think we need more to make good prudent decisions. Because as you look around, state control is everywhere. And the first control they go after is your checkbook. But not knocking anything, what the progress we made. But going forward, I think we need to even delve into it a little deeper as a board. Other than that, the other goals, I'm fine with the goals, the culture. And the timely responses, I think that's something that would help everybody.
So I've made some notes, I'll put these together and send them back out to you prior to the board meeting, so that we can vote on those at the next meeting.
Today, the next meeting is September the second at five thirty at administrative office. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.